Craig Romi.
Here.
Caitlin Turner, here. Linda Barbell.
Here.
Thank you.
To join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remember, if you have a conflict, just let the council vote before you vote on any particular item. I'm going to need a motion to approve an amended agenda for tonight. We'll be deleting the Drinking Water Excellence Award. It hasn't arrived yet, so it's not available to present to the city employees. So we're going to delete the Drinking Water Excellence Award from the agenda.
Make a motion to approve an amended agenda with the elimination of the Drinking Water Excellence Award.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from July 6th, council meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from July 6th, council meeting?
Second.
Discussion?
On, under a public hearing, the, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eighth line down, it says because the treatment is fair, and I believe it should say because the treatment is unfair. He was against the request because the treatment is unfair.
Not where you're at, I'm not saying it yet.
Under public hearing.
Yep.
In the eighth line down, well, it starts at the end of the seventh line. He is against the request because the treatment is unfair, instead of fair.
I have no recollection of that statement, so...
They were discussing, um...
Yeah, the right way of how the...
Yeah.
...state was taking him.
Yes.
And giving...
Not other persons or whatnot, and he didn't feel it was fair.
Okay. Everyone else was very much...
Unfair sounds correct.
Yeah.
Any other edits? Alright, so you got that one, Miss Teague?
Yes.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the bills in between?
Make a motion to approve bills in between for $221,865.83.
Second. Discussion?
I have a question. South Dakota Retirement Supplement?
Yes.
How come Bill Wyman's name's still on there?
She must not have taken it off yet, but it's just Jason and I that have the supplemental now, so I think she copies it each time. Those amounts are just mine and Jason's, so make sure we take that name off.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the current claims?
Make a motion to approve the current claims of $57,481.12.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. We have a council update from Andrea Powers with Shedco, a quarterly update.
I did have a question, I'm sorry.
Oh, I apologize.
Who bought the diesel mower?
The airport.
Is that the airport? Is that on there?
Budget.
Yeah. They had a budget of $12,000 that came in under that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, this is the Council. Can everybody hear me?
It's on.
Can you hear her?
I can.
I'm eating the mic.
I'm trying to hear you now.
You can hear me now.
Yeah.
Hello! Okay, I'll use my big girl voice. Thank you for having me tonight for a quarterly update. First, I'd like to discuss Fuel to Growth. That was a conference I was about to attend, and I believe City Council was invited to it, at the Black State University campus in Rapid City. It was a Jana AD conference in May. It resulted in a partnership between Rushmore Regional Alliance. That's the marketing committee branch of Black House Council Local Governments and Black State University, and the newly formed Economic Development Professional Association of South Dakota to present a three-day basic economic development course. That course is going to be held at Black State University September 14th, 15th, and 16th. Can you still hear me? I get quieter and quieter as I keep talking. I'm sorry. Also, yeah, thank you, you're from somewhere. In June, Shedco Chamber and Terry Schlegel partnered to provide a Rule X watch party. On June 16th, it was presented by Dakota Resources with a leading question, where do we go from here? Hot Springs has 19 participants. We were the largest watch party in the state. We spent the day developing some topics of concern for the community. These included ideas around intergenerational activities in the community, school internship programs, and what Karen Meston referred to as the Silver Tsunami, which means those people who are business owners who wish to retire out of their businesses and have no one to succeed them and take over. After some discussion, we realized that all of our topics of concern could be addressed in some part or whole by forming a focused relationship with the school district for more intensive job shadows, volunteer activities, and a semester-length internship for the seniors as part of their senior experience. Subsequently, Olivia and I met with the school administration. We developed a timeline and a plan to get this off the ground, beginning in the spring semester for the internships. All the preparatory work, resume construction, career exploration, job shadows, volunteer hours would all be done in the first semester. Any questions about that? Our task group is going to meet again after August 2nd to start working on the types of internships that could be provided. We want these to be resume-quality, career-transferable. So by that, I mean, it's not enough to work at the grocery store. Not that that's not a good job, but a person needs to be trained in staff scheduling, inventory, shelving products. These are the types of skills that are transferable to any other career. Not any, but many other careers, right? It's not sweeping the floor. Western Dakota Technical College. Oh, I was asked to attend, as a result of all that work with the school, I was asked to attend the Reimagining Educational Models Grant Colloquium, which is next week for three days, and it is going to focus on how to provide students highly-specific technical skills to prepare them for school, for college and careers. Western Dakota Technical College, I'm continuing to work with Western Dakota Technical College to provide career cluster-specific coursework at the high school level. Additionally, the Hot Springs District was chosen as one of five to participate in the Governors Academy. Through this, students will have the opportunity to learn high-level programming skills as well as cybersecurity skills through Dakota State University. And all of this came about as a result of having Dr. Griffiths at our banquet two years ago, if any of you were there. She gave a really good talk about the future of cybersecurity and the need for those skillsets, and how South Dakota is really the premier center for those skillsets outside of either coast nationwide, because of DSU's 26-plus programs, training programs. Dakota State University, as I just said, I've been working with Dr. Griffiths, along with, she's the president, along with Catherine Dakota, who's the DSU Director of Economic Development, and Ashley Podrasky, the Associate Dean of Computer Cyber Science, as well as Director of Entrepreneurship, to develop an incubator project utilizing Building One at the state's vet's home. What is an incubator project? An incubator project is a space for baby businesses, and this one would be a space for baby businesses in the tech area. As you know, Schiff owns the building, and they are a part of this process, and encouraging us to find ways to bring businesses and also focus on the youth factor straight out of the university. So our first task will be to have students do a floor design that would be useful for a cybersecurity-type business. Yeah, it'll be interesting, it's way above my pay grade.
Andrea?
Yes?
Need to ask you to pause, we have a 7:10 public hearing.
Sure.
We'll have you back after that. Alright, so we have a 7:10 public hearing on an application for a retail on/off sale wine insider license from HSP Loft Properties LLC to be used at 311 North River Street. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the council?
I don't even hear from anyone, I guess. How are y'all doing today?
It's like a two bread.
You all doing okay? Good to see y'all. Yeah, so currently, we have a wine license, but it is restricted to the, it's the standard malt combo license, so it's restricted to the wines made here in South Dakota, which none of those wineries at the moment are distributing. Therefore, we had to pay for the additional license so that we could reach outside of South Dakota to fulfill that wine.
So mainly, you're doing this just for your stock?
Well, we, we're supposed to sell beer and wine, but we can't use the combo license we have because we can't obtain wine in South Dakota. So yeah, that's, that's the main reason, is we have to pay for the additional license so that we can go outside South Dakota to get that wine.
You have two addresses, I know they're side by side, so do they, do you have to have a license for both addresses, or why are there two addresses?
Well, the business license, the business address is 311, and that is the business that is obtaining the, that is the address that we are obtaining it for.
Okay.
But obtaining it for the 309, so yes.
Oh, okay.
Council, have any questions? Appreciate the explanation.
Okay.
You're welcome. Any other comments from the public?
Is there a tax difference as far as you bring stuff in from other states?
Uh, I don't know.
They do get taxed at delivery, delivery.
Yeah.
Hey. Doesn't really come from another state?
Well, they brought the other bill, actually.
Well, our vendor's...
Our vendor is Johnson Brothers, so it's the same vendor, in-state vendor. It's just their wines made somewhere else.
Yeah, they're, they're a state.
Yep, exactly. I muted this, so I don't know when I can walk away.
You're done.
Okay, no, you're good, thank you, alright.
Any more questions from the public? Any questions from the council? Alright, go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:16. Need a motion to either approve, deny, or table the application?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for retail on/off sale wine insider license from HSP Loft Properties LLC to be used at 311 North River Street.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good luck.
Alright. Thank you for your patience, Andrea.
Were there any questions about the DSU-related programming up at the school?
I had one, but I just didn't want to interrupt while you were talking because you were on a good flow.
I wasn't saying "um" every two seconds.
Does that, the programs, can it start at the high school level and you continue with it always?
That's a good question. So, the first time Dr. Griffiths and I and Dennis and Troy from the school district and a few other folks met, Dennis decided, in his wisdom, that he wanted to wait a year and get kids introduced at the middle school level, so that they're being taught the skills that they will need to enter into these courses that will be offered from DSU. And I was just in a meeting today, and Catherine and Ashley were thanking me, it wasn't me, profoundly for building, working to build that pipeline at the school, rather than just jump right into it. So, I probably would have jumped right into it, so it's good, good for Dennis, he did the right thing.
Andrea? Are you done?
Yeah.
Sorry. Is something that could also be introduced to the VA and the CWT program for the veterans?
I know that Dennis is willing to work with any other groups. This is not the Industrial Arts Building. This is a different program. But Dennis is also happy to have other groups in the community come in and use the Industrial Arts Building after hours. I think he's very community-oriented, and I'm really, really enthused by what's going on at the school district right now. And it's slow, you know, it has to be built, everything has to be built, and you do it, you go slow to finish fast and get it right, or you jump in and try to do it all at once and you have to go back and over and over again. We all know that.
Thank you.
Are all these, all this, is done here in town, or is it split between here and Rapid City?
No, everything that I've talked about is what's happening here in Hot Springs.
Okay.
And honestly, I don't know what the other four schools were that were chosen to be part of the Governors Academy. In fact, I didn't even know it was called that until a month or so ago, because the school district and I and Dr. Griffiths have been working on this, working on potential curriculum now for over a year. Do we have a start date for this, potentially? I believe it's this fall. The REM colloquium that I'm going to with the admin from the school next week should tell me more about that.
And high school, if they started in the high school, does that, is those correct? Would that be accredited to them towards college?
Yes, yes, that is my understanding.
How about for the, for their high school years?
Yes, and that is kind of, yes, and that's, if I understand correctly, this, we'll look at that, what the acronym means. Reimagining Educational Models is all about blurring the distinction between high school and university. So the kids have a greater idea of what they want to do, or even what they don't want to do, that's valuable.
Yes.
When they go to a specific university, or to your college, or any post-secondary training for that matter.
Well, to be honest with you, that's very open-minded, because most of the program don't have that.
I know.
So that, I'm all for that.
I can't say, I can't speak highly enough about the work that's going on in school right now.
If there is incentive for them to do that, because for a lot of them, it's difficult to get away, and to have everything here in town, and we will be credited for high school and college credits, that's, that's a compliment, so yes, it is.
And most kids, honestly, they want to go away for college, right? So go away. Have you, you know, experience the world, absolutely. And then when you're ready and you want to, come back. That's the message that I would like to see the community send.
Well, I tell anybody to ask, especially my kids, I told them to go away, get educated, check out the world, chase the money, and when they're ready to settle down, you will find a place in the public.
I've been working with Helping Hands, which is a nonprofit. The folks who run it, Larry Zimmerman, who some of you might know, was Superintendent of the State Veterans Affairs prior to this administration, and Dave Gates run the nonprofit. Its mission, its goal, is to teach veterans how to do residential construction. And they're, they want to build tiny homes which are foundation-worthy, so they're not, they're houses, they're not trailers, things like that. And then hopefully, sell those tiny homes to veterans as well. So I've been working with them to find some funding for their operation, and they would like very much to do this in Fall River County, even though they could do it anywhere, but we have the VA and we have the feeder system because of the VA. Dakota Resources has started, is working on a website called 605 Things to Do in South Dakota, and I submitted 12 things for Fall River, and on short notice, I'm always, when I'm under pressure to come up with all the great things that are happening, you know, like, uh, but I did come up with 12. That included the Mammoth Site and Pioneer Museum, and Moxon Springs, and Evans Plunge, and Angus Dora, and Colebrook. And if anybody else has something they would like to see in that list, please email me, because I could never remember all the great things we have here. Mickelson Trail, it's endless. So please feel free. Walking College. After John submitted an application for SDSU students who were landscape architects to come out and look at the Ray River Project and submit design ideas, because of the information that Larry gave us, or gave John, I should say, about the percentage of people who have are mobility-impaired or use assistive devices, that's 22% in Hot Springs, because of that alone, I was asked to join a Walking College Fellowship. This is a nationwide project that provides education and advocacy for walkability. I'm going to use the River Project as my focal point and our mobility-challenged population as my focused population. That's a six-month program. And Larry, when you get a chance, I need to talk with you about some folks in town that I know are traveling all over the place in wheelchairs, and they know every, every barrier to getting around the community. And I don't know their names, and I talk to them all the time, and I, that's how I need to get together with you on that. Business Park Housing Project at the Airport property. John and I have identified four or five potential funding streams, and it's going to be a task to figure out what goes where in the best fashion to make sure we get the most bang for the city's buck out of each one of those programs, and we're not being redundant in our applications. And we also have a first occupant of the business park, which qualifies us for GOED's LIIP. That's the Local Infrastructure Improvement Program grant through GOED, and I talked about all those different grant options last time. The mitigation grant program, I am willing and able to help work on that grant that's due December 1st for emergency generators for the city. And lastly, Arts Midwest, this is Terry Schlegel's bailiwick. She is, has invited them to our community to do some performing arts projects at the school and in the community, and I'm participating as an ally. Any other questions about anything?
What kind of, what kind of, what are you bringing in as far as that?
As far as I know right now, it'll be a musicians group, and I can't remember what country they're from, but they'll be doing a lot of things at the school and in our community. This is a shared project with Custer. And Terry would be the one to have every piece of information about that.
I'm friends with Terry.
Okay, so you probably know something about it, but... Any else?
Has there been any movement with the meatpacking plant? Did you see the article in the paper?
Uh, yes, I did. Okay. Then you know what I, what I know right now. I confess that I was not a part of that grant that they received. That happened while I was out of town, so I need to get together with those guys and see how they're setting up their financing, if they can help with that. Okay. Thank you so much. You're a busy woman.
Andrea? As much as I would love to take credit for the 22%, that was all John.
Oh, was it? Sorry, John.
But I will talk with you on the wheelchair, okay?
Okay.
Don't forget to give me your note.
Oh, yeah.
Because I listened instead of time.
John, did you have anything to say about that airport project?
Bellas is interested in helping us now as well, so we'll see where that goes.
Any other questions for Andrea?
Sounds like you've got a full plate.
Thank you for all your work in today.
I enjoy it. I enjoy it.
Is there a question? Did you have a question?
No, thank you very much for your information.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrea. Communications from the public, is there anyone who would like to chat with the council?
Mr. Mayor, council, good evening. Like summer, 549 Colebrook. Just a few notes here on the fiscal church steps. As representing Climb Hot Springs and Challenge Dakota, I'd like to say a big thank you for repairs that are happening to that, so that staircase may be utilized for Climb Hot Springs in September. Is there, I know John and I visited, with, he had a dollar amount that was being allocated for that? Has that been reached? I see that they've stopped.
No, it's just a, it's a labor shortage at the moment. We've had a lot of people on vacation, but their intention is to get them stabilized before your event. It's not a permanent fix by any means, but they are replacing the stairs that are completely gone.
Right on. And I'm going to keep working with Dusty through Challenge Dakota for the Save a Step campaign, and if, I'm hopeful to get a couple of contractors over to at least take a look so we can get some written quotes before the next deadline for the Outside of Deadwood grant in October. Thank you to John for the recommendation letter for the QR code project for the Save Our Sands Co. nonprofit group. And that is, is kind of put on hold at the moment until Jared's position is filled with the chamber, unless there is someone else that'll be working with updating the city website. Is that kind of his, his, pardon, duties there? Is there anybody else that I could work with? Is there anybody else that I could work with? Currently, it's Jared. I believe the chamber will be having an announcement about that position. Jared and I have been working on the website. My hope is, is that next Tuesday is the council's first budget meeting for 2022. And I would like to have the site mostly done. Ivory pure, 99.94% there. Present it to the council, see how they feel about it and see if they're okay with going ahead and moving forward with it. I had sent out a email link to the historic preservation folks about the Silken Hot Springs page that I think addressed a lot of the hopes that you folks had for, you know, highlighting the different historic structures in town and those QR codes being in the windows. And then being able to link, or to put that, link to the individual sites on the website in your QR code. So I think we're close. Have you had a chance to look at that Silken Hot Springs page?
I have, I have.
What do you feel about it?
Um, it's a good start.
Okay.
There's, there's a lot that could be done there with that, but it is a good start.
All right.
Crosswalks look great. They stand out really nicely. And with the exception of now I can't hear myself, but I can hear you guys, so we'll microphone. If that's, if that's what's changed, it's midnight.
That you have to give the car away, I think, if you want it. Right on.
Chris.
Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
Hi, Jesse, I'm representing Hot Springs Youth Baseball. And I don't know if you want us to go now or wait until the committee meeting? Because we came out of committee, I got some paperwork for last meeting in 29 copies, so 100% TBIs.
Okay.
More than nine?
I need, I need, I need. So anyway, what you're looking at there is a Google Maps with some stuff that's kind of been added that's really on there. If you're wondering what this is. If you look towards the body, you'll see the big name, Main Legion Field. And then just to the south of that, towards the library, there's a couple of things penciled in there. What we're asking for from the baseball association is permission to use that far southwest corner for a little baseball field. We'd be doing all the funding and raising money for this thing. It was with the rec committee, they asked me over a month ago to work with soccer because they, part of the big plan was that they, he had room for a couple soccer fields up there. So I went and worked with Bob Cruz from the soccer association. We measured everything out and you can see the two little soccer fields in there beside it. So that's where they'll fit in, plus the baseball field. So really, we're here tonight just a blessing to use that corner of that open spot up there at Butler Park to put in an additional baseball field for our little skids.
Have you taken a look at how this design fits in with the master plan for Butler Park?
Yes, that's what, that's where we started with this thing was. That piece of land was not utilized for anything. It was just open space. So that's where, out of that committee meeting, they said that they knew that there was some stuff used for soccer possibly up there. And they wanted me to work with the soccer folks. And that's what we did to make sure that they, their part of the plan was still going to be able to be utilized up there. And from what Bob was telling me, that's the pieces of land that they need for their soccer fields.
Are you going to fence around it?
Um, yeah, we'll be fenced around that because it'll be just a regular baseball field so we can play extra games there. What we were actually thinking though, to make things a little bit easier, is we're hoping to get to the point where we can get some types of like travel tournaments here because you need two fields. So if I make it, for that littler field, we could get a movable fence that can come in and out of there. That way we can move it in and out for games. And then also if we have that movable outfield fence, if soccer needs to somehow in the future need that outfield space, they can use that as well because we can be able to move that fence out of the way.
Our last fence bid was.
For that softball field?
Good luck with your fundraising, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I heard about that, so.
So aside from anticipating for these free fields, will meet any kind of sanctioning necessary? You talked about tournaments coming in or having tournaments?
I can't speak on behalf of soccer. I know Bob was talking about utilizing these things for, they have, I'm not soccer family. Maybe, well, his family does both. Levi McDill. Levi McDill. It's a big soccer tournament that they have coming in the, in the spring that thousands of people come and play. That's what they were going to utilize these two extra field spaces for. For soccer, for soccer, for the soccer side. So as long as those are available, correct me if I'm wrong, they were all for it because they're, they're wanting that area up there leveled out as well. Because right now there's some big mountains, so we're going to have to level it, put the baseball field in so we can level the whole thing so it'll be ready for soccer if they can get money to put in their soccer fields too.
I understand that Tracy Bastian had talked about leveling and using that land to finish off the corner of the big soccer field that's up there over more like by the parking lot to the east, that we needed some filler to like expand and make that regulation or something. So he does have a use for that dirt apparently.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, because they were talking about that even further down the road and what Bob was saying that there was, they were hoping to put in like a U-12. Does that sound right? Is that a Bayberry Field or? Sorry, I don't know soccer. But they said, yeah, that, it would be that kind of open spot down at the bottom. But they said that, that would need some work. He said that's further down the road for the soccer side, I think.
You mentioned your group is raising the money for all of this?
Yeah, we just need a blessing. So we're, we're out of space is what it boils down to with our little kids. This last year, we tried to, I'm the president of our youth baseball association and we work closely with the city because it's ranked as some of the record for the younger kids. And we kind of tried to guess what, how many teams we're going to have. Last year, we had two majors teams and one minors team. And this last year, we had three of each. And literally, I got two teams made up of kids that just moved to town that I didn't know existed. So we keep on this pace. I, we're a bitch for space. We were having to get practice late at night, split days, middle of the afternoon, whatever we could find. And then that doesn't even include girls' softball because they didn't even have a coach this year. So they didn't get that together. So as soon as that happens, we'll have to get the bats and their softball fields. So if we were stealing space out of that, are we good for the little kids to play, so?
And this is all doable by the next baseball season?
We'll try. We can get the, we can get the bats up, put in and that field, infield in. I mean, that horrible fence, they can always wave, but now we're hoping it's worth this fall done to get that ready.
How about water sprinklers?
There's sprinklers on the bay fields, but I don't think there's sprinklers all bath there. So that'd be something, I suppose I have to talk to Barterville and see if they can run lines off the irrigate over there for us. But right now I can tell there's nothing because that's, it's fairly green issues. We got sprinklers, it's pretty hard.
Well, in my mind, I was thinking if you guys were actually going to fundraise to put sprinkler system in there also? Or just what you're talking about now is you're talking about having employee, city employee doing all the water?
I just want to talk and see where they, where they're, where they're plumbed in for that all the real.
Where are your stuff out at?
Yeah, exactly.
But you weren't, as far as your association, you're not thinking that way?
We haven't discussed that part of that yet.
Is that?
What was on the city plan?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, well, I don't know. Was that area, I guess I didn't know, was it, I'm assuming since they were planning to put soccer fields in there at some point, I'm guessing that was probably a part of your.
At this point, right off the top of my head, I'm not sure how far the sprinkler system goes. It used to be, you know, comedian parks. So I know there's not water all the way out there, but you also have water there at the library. So, but what I'm saying is if you don't put a sprinkler system and we were to add these three fields, if you have to water it by hand, you're, you're adding on quite a bit more because they're having, they have trouble, not that they don't get it done, but it is a stretch getting a lot of the water in there. And you got to get it done at least the day prior to you coming to play.
Yeah.
Because then you're just going to tear up the field. So I just was wondering how far of that view your committee has discussed?
We haven't discussed that part yet. And I can speak for soccer. I don't know when they would get those two little soccer fields. I don't know when they're planning on doing anything with that. So I'm just going to speak about that little baseball field.
It does look.
How about planting for grass?
I will have to do that. I mean, as part of the project, I need a lot to get seeded. I mean, the main thing, I guess, is we'll have to figure out where the water is and if we can connect it to that big field somehow and use the irrigation out there, that'd make quite easy. Because that big, that little field is not going to be really big. A couple, those bigger sprinkler heads will probably cover it. Because we're only talking about 150-foot fence. Because this is going to be for the real little guys, the T-ball and minors. So it's not going to be a whole lot of ground.
Is this anything that's going to go into the night and make all of our lights?
Those little guys usually don't play at night. They're usually done by 7:00 o'clock. So I can't envision we need night lights for that field right now. So we could go without lights for a while now. Because we do got the other Little League field that has lights. So those teams that they play later at night, the 10 to 12-year-old bunch, they can play on that lighted field yet.
What you're looking for from the council is, you know, okay, go ahead, move forward with the plan and then work through the Parks, Department of Parks Committee to figure out the water, where the irrigation comes from and what that might look like.
Because it'll be a little while. I mean, we got, we don't, I can say we don't have money sitting around right here right now. So it's, we got a fundraiser to win or this might be a project coming next year. It's just going to take us a little bit to get money.
One of the issues that we will likely have to address is we just, within the last few months, signed a contract with South Dakota Wildland Fire and designated almost all areas of Butler Park, with the exception of the two baseball fields that they would have access to in the event of a Level Two incident that they would take over and set up. And so the areas marked out here in the event of a Level Two or Level One incident would be taken up with, with trailers and equipment and such. And so we need to determine whether we take that real estate out of the contract and redo the contract or whether it's, we're willing to sacrifice that land and they would then be responsible for restoring anything they damaged if they did have to use it. So that's just something we need to think about since we do have an existing agreement with that organization. Well, there's a lot of things we've got to, we need more information as far as making a judgment. To make a decision, I think more information if we had. I'd like to know what Tracy's thoughts are on it, also with the water. I'm not against it. Don't take me that I'm against it because I'm not. But the thing is, we've got to make sure that when we say yes, we know what we're saying yes to and what it impacts everybody else. Just like Bill said, we have that contract.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not against it, but due diligence, you just, we got to ask all the questions and understand the answer. So that our, when we say yes, it's, it's a good yes.
Yeah, not more headaches. You understand?
Yeah.
But if I was you, I would keep going with your, putting your plan together and everything. But for us to make a decision, we would have to look at that contract. Also, we'd like to know where the water, where the water is going to come from. Because you can get it, I think, at two spots. One's that, one tap off the library water supply or if it's easier to get it off the old field. Then my question is this. You, you were saying, how many teams are all new kids?
What's this?
How many, how many teams did you say earlier was new teams for new kids that you didn't even know?
We had one in each age group. So I had one team of new kids pretty much from seven to nine-year-olds and then another team of 10 to 12-year-olds.
Have you looked at parking?
Yeah, we got, we got parking out there. Because we, when we have games going on the way it is now, like we'll have nights where the Baybrook team is playing, which is the 13 to 15-year-olds. And then we have games going on as far as T-ball's playing or the softball field. Then we got Little League playing on the Little League field, our 10 to 12-year-olds. And there's, it builds up, but there's, there's spots to be had. It's not like it's in an overflow area or anything.
I live right up there, so.
Okay. You could probably see the busy nights and when you.
Oh, yeah, I hear them, I hear them too. And they, like I said, I am against it. As long as we are improving, I am for it. There is some questions to this idea of.
Well, we couldn't vote on it tonight anyway since it wasn't on the agenda. So we can get it on the next agenda and you can have some time to get your questions answered. I'm sure Jesse will be happy to answer any that he can. And then it sounds like you've identified a few internal questions. So here we go, I put the action on the next agenda.
John, do you have any, any questions or anything to add to that conversation?
In the interim, I'll get, hold the bar. Tracy will, will have some more information as well.
Could you let me in on that one?
The last Parks and Recreation meeting was last week, really?
Yes.
So that moved from the first Wednesday of the month. And will it stay, will it go back to the first Wednesday of the month or will it stay?
That would be a John question. It will go back to the first Wednesday of the month, which is?
The 4th of August, after the next meeting.
How about we, we give the city to find the answers to where the water's at? Give Councilman Lucas an opportunity to look at the contract with the Wildland Fire folks and then kick this around one more time at the Parks and Recreation. And that will be before the next, I believe it's before the next.
It's after, but we can put up the second meeting in August because it doesn't sound like it's a very.
No, it's just, the main thing is we were heading in the right direction. So when I go out and advertise here to the people to start raising money, I can't tell them to build a baseball field and we don't build a baseball field. It's kind of what I'm going to have here. It's pretty hard to sell that to businesses and I'm just advertising. I don't feel fences, that, for fence, it is not going to exist. So that's where my comfort level is at, we pretty much head, but.
All right. So take it back to Parks and Recreation, the first meeting in August with the intent of having it in front of the full council, whatever the recommendation may be, for the second meeting, second council meeting in August.
If anybody has any other questions, you can email them to me. Missy has my email number, so.
Thank you for all your, your efforts.
You have done a lot, Andrew.
Thank you, Jesse. Any other communications from the public?
There used to be a baseball field there in the same spot.
Okay, I have to use the microphone so everybody can hear you.
It was a softball field.
Okay, so there was a field there at one time, so that's all right.
Okay.
So with that being said, there, there quite possibly could still be water lines going through that, right?
We'll do our best to get those answers. Any other? We'll do our best to get those answers. Any other comments from the public? All right. Takes us to personnel action. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through F?
I'll make a motion to approve personnel actions A through F.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item A, a possible motion discussion to approve and publish a notice to bidders.
I'll make a motion to approve, to approve and publish a notice to bidders for the construction of the 2021 Martin Street Sewer and Water Improvement Project. Sealed bids will be received until 12:30 PM on August 10th, 2021. Bids will be opened and read aloud on the same day at the Public Works Committee meeting. At 1:15 PM, a recommendation of responsive bidder will be made to the City Council for approval at the regularly scheduled meeting held on August 16th, 2021.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item B, a possible motion discussion to set a public hearing on August 2nd, 2021.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing on August 2nd, 2021, at 7:10 PM to act on the transfer applications from Big Time Pizza, Inc. for a change in business location for the existing retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine and the retail on-off sale wine, Cedar Wine, signed their license to be used at 403 Highway 18 bypass.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item C, a possible motion discussion to set a public hearing on August 2nd, 2021.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing on 8/21 at 7:15 PM to act on the temporary alcoholic beverage license application from the Hot Springs Brewery Club to be used at Butler Park on 8/28/21 in cooperation with the balloon festival event.
Second. Discussion?
I have a question. Is that only a one-day event or is it a two-day event?
They requested the license for one day. It may be a two-day event, but what they're doing in conjunction with it, they're requesting license for one day.
Oh, okay.
The Night Glow is on the one day in town at Butler Park. The event is like three days, but most of it's out at the airport. It's just the one day will be in town.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item D, a possible motion discussion to approve fallwater water users utility easements.
I'll make a motion to approve the fallwater water users utility easement request at the northwest perimeter of airport property outside of wildlife fence, which has received FAA concerns.
Second. Discussion? Garland, we had talked this morning about this easement. Do you have any comments for the council?
I have reviewed the easement and have no comment or objection.
All right. City's interests are protected?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I can't work, we eat too much.
I'll think about it, work tomorrow.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item E, a possible motion discussion to approve travel training requests.
Make the motion for, to approve travel training request for the City Administrator, John Gregory, to attend the 2021 SDML Annual Conference in Spearfish, South Dakota at 10:05:21 to 10:08:21.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Bring us to our committee reports. Administrator and Finance, Caitlin.
Admin and Finance met July 12th, 2021, 1 PM at the Mueller Civic Center. City staff and council present were Bob, John, Misty, Bill Lukens, Lyndon Marvell, Tracy, Kathy Redd, and myself. In old business, the Recreation Assistant Director position request, this was on your agenda tonight. Thank you for voting yes on it. There are actually two of them that will be utilized in this position. I mentioned this previously at a council meeting that's gonna be coming up on a future agenda. Kathy had requested help for herself specifically. And these hours will be coming out of her total hours, which is a lower hourly rate that then we would pay if she worked them. So it's a win-win for the city to get the help that Kathy needs. In new business, reviewed the monthly finance officer reports from our July 6th meeting. We discussed the wastewater foreman, utilities department wage clarifications, and new employees budget. Tracy was available to discuss this. Again, on tonight's agenda was a request to approve an increase for our full-time wastewater maintenance operator. The employee in this position will hopefully in the future be moving into the wastewater foreman position after completing the specifications we require. We had a request for a smartphone for the airport manager. It was the recommendation of the Admin Finance Committee to approve this request. It was my specific opinion, if I'm not reaching too much, or I think the general consensus of the rest of the committee that if an employee is required or needs to utilize a phone for city purposes, then the city should be responsible for providing the phone. That's some, that's a policy we need to find too, moving forward, as far as what extent that applies and so on. We had a member of the public request if the City Council would consider videotaping other meetings, such as planning and zoning. So the committee reviewed this request and ultimately recommended that we do not videotape other meetings at this time. First, you know, one of the first things that came up was what meetings do we tape or not tape? Under our committee reports on our packets, every committee, every council meeting is the customer fallwater regional waste management district. You know, would we include every committee in this? Like that one, for example, are we or should we be responsible to videotape that? Who videotapes the meetings? How do you share that equipment? What employee or employees become responsible for videotaping the meetings, which takes place at various days and times of the month, which is sometimes not during normal work hours and at various locations? Would those hours be additional or kind of their normal day work hours? Do we ask committee chairs to videotape? If we have more than one person videotaping, how do we work out with the equipment from one person to the next? On the surface, it sounds like a very good idea, but ultimately the committee did not think it was feasible to pursue. Again, the recommendation from this committee was that at this time, we think videotaping three meetings is not necessary, not feasible. We also discussed the Evans Plunge and Rose Springs lifeguard wage increases and area-wide wage comparison for our graduating pay scale consideration. We had a guest visit from the high school principal, who's also a member of the advisory committee. This was just a discussion about how to engage our teenagers at the high school, what would make them interested in working at our world-class facility wage discussion in comparison to other aquatic facilities in the region. This was just a discussion item only this time, but as our budget hearings come up, something to keep in mind. And our next Admin Finance meeting is August 2nd at 1 PM at the Mueller Civic Center.
Any questions for Caitlin? Thank you, Caitlin. Airport Advisory, Bill?
Next Airport Advisory Committee meeting is Thursday, August 5th, 8 AM at the airport.
Thank you. Customer fallwater regional waste management, Larry?
The meeting started at 7:02. All members were present except two. All motions approved unless otherwise noted, no conflicts, no conflicts of interest. Motion by Messino, second by Horton to approve the July 8th agenda. Motion by Ryan, second by Weekly to approve the main 13 meeting minutes. The Treasury report as follows by Starla Russell. Expenses by vendor summary May 1st, June 30th, 2021, total eighty thousand two hundred and one, eighty two hundred and one thousand ninety-four cents. Outstanding expenses and transfers total seventeen thousand seven hundred and ninety thirteen cents. The landfill has an eighty-five percent increase in operating expenses year-to-date 2021 and year-to-date 2020. The landfill has a twenty percent, two-point-zero-one decrease in deposits year-to-date 2021 to year-to-date 2020. Operating funds of June 30th, 2021, total district funds available are nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. Financial assurance funds held by resolution for closure post-closure as of June 30th, 2021. Total financial assurance funds are five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. Motion by Messino, second by Horton to approve the Treasury's report. Credit card payment service were reviewed and the current fee structures remain the same. Contractor managers reported by Kerry Barker stated everything was good and been busy. Commented on leftover gravel and paving project from Yesway that the fairgrounds received instead of the landfill site. A D A N R representative stepped, stopped by for informal visit and gave general feedback to Barker. A draft stormwater prevention plan development marker in FMG will be reviewed by the board. May also include pending projects requiring board action on the rubble site drainage bid proposals. FMG report Jason Heinz letters were distributed to two board members from the D A N R outlining the state's approval of the Phase Two cell closure and rubble site drainage projects and grant application for project costs were distributed. Bid award for Phase Two cell closure and rubble site drainage was awarded to Barker Concrete, and it was the lowest bidder. May 2021, D A N R announced the availability of grant funds for collection and disposal of waste tires. The state requires a twenty percent match-up and approximate forty thousand dollar collection and waste program. Resolution 2021 dash zero zero three was presented to review and approved by the board. The annual meeting, Meg Ryan will replace De Anderson as Secretary Treasurer, Mike Lindes, chairman. Dean Weekly, Vice Chairman, will replace Terry Kaiser. There was no public comment. Next meeting, September 9th, 2021, 7 PM at the Mueller Center, meeting adjourned at 8:05 PM.
Any questions for Larry? Thank you, Larry. Historic preservation, Deborah?
The Historic Preservation Commission met July 7th at 5:01 PM. Members present were Steve Wina, Mike Summer, Deborah Johnston, Scott Sogi, Brian Crawford, Kara Hagan, Gerald Coligan, and Pat Light. There were also guests present, Lisa Cruzie, Ber Cruz, Riza Rutz, and Brett Eastep. The agenda was a motion to be approved by Kara, seconded by Pat, and passed. Old business, still waiting on access to the Fowler Building. At that time, search wards were forthcoming and to document the discoveries in was still photos and video. Police officers, Scott Sogi, and one witness will be allowed in. And I guess that's still ongoing to get that under arrangements. A building permit has been applied for on the Bodega Building to add bracing and prep to fill the area that was under the floor. There was also an application for a building permit on the Petty Building. Marty Malenke is the contractor doing the repairs. Scott Sogi will email owners of the Fowler, Petty, and Bodega Buildings to inquire about timeframe for visible actionable repairs. Deborah will inquire about possible legal transfer regarding the now vacant West Oak property on the premise that nonprofit-deeded property is supposed to go to other nonprofit organizations legally. Scott will inquire with Skull Construction on timeframe for the repairs to Steve Wina's building. Under new business, Riza Rutz with Polish Salon at 401 North River Street is asking for an extended timeframe to display the salon banner on the pole attached to her building until the road construction is completed. The pole will not change positions and the banner will not extend past the leading edge of the overhanging attached to the front of the building. Pat motion to grant a waiver to display the banner until the road project is complete. Motion seconded by Kara and motion passed. Lisa Cruz with Many Moves Trading at 706 Jennings was inquiring about her new sign and the possibility of it being the same size as the old Red Owl sign when the grocery store occupied the building. This brought about discussion with a motion made by Kara to accept the square footage amount of eighty-one point fifty-five square feet based on past signage. Motion was seconded by Brian and passed. There will be vinyl lettering applied to the windows until the sign is completed and attached. After that, the vinyl on the windows will be removed. Lisa also asked about replacing the eight existing windows that were uncovered by the old blue steel that was taken down on the front of her building. There will be new sections of double insulated tempered glass installed with wooden replacement, wooden frame built around them so that no vinyl will be exposed. Pat motion to approve new window replacement. The motion was seconded by Brian and passed. Scott is to require about the, inquire about the final proposal for parking and sidewalk dimensions on North River Street from the DOT and email findings to the commission. Steve will email the current revisions for the historic ordinances. There was discussion on if there could be highlighting with the document to show what is being removed and what is being added. Brett Eastep from 309 General at 311 North River Street was present to seek approval for his business sign for 309 General. After discussion, Kara motion to approve, Brian seconded, and the motion passed. Brett also inquired about installing a rollout awning, which would extend over the south side of the building at 309 North River. It would be mounted using the existing hardware. This discussion prompted Pat to motion to accept the awning proposal, seconded by Mike and carried. Discussion was also had about a last-minute certificate of appropriateness for a sign at 109 North Chicago for the new insurance agent. This application came extremely late in the day and had Scott running and attempting to get questions answered. There was a motion to table the discussion, as there was too many unknowns with an incomplete application. Motion seconded by Pat and passed. There was an amendment to the approved approval of signage for Lisa Cruz. The commission is trying to adopt a suggestion of no white, black-on-white signage. Steve motion to inquire with Lisa about using complementary colors on the sign that would blend well with the building. Discussion was had on adopting a historical color palette that building owners could reference when choosing a finish. This was seconded by Mike and motion passed. Discussion items, due to time constraints, we decided to revisit temporary banners, the current ordinance and historical district boundaries at the next meeting. Scott presented a new form for an inquiry business owner to make it to our agenda. Jerry presented a picture of native artwork that was done on a piece of ledger paper that was dated April, May, and June of 1905. The business listed on the ledger were the Gillespie Hotel, the Evans Hotel, Minnetonka Bath, and the Fargo Mercantile. This piece of art was purchased in Bozeman, Montana. Mike mentioned writing histories on the following properties, the Petty Building, the West Oak, the Lutheran Hospital, the Shan Building, and Fargo Mercantile. The meeting adjourned at 6:31, and the next one is Wednesday, August 4th, at 5 PM here at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Deborah? Thank you, Deborah. Evans Plunge Advisory, Lyndon?
The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee met on July 8th, 2024.
The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee met on July eighth, twenty twenty-four, at noon in the Evans Plunge. Committee members present were Chris Hansen, Kathy Rentsch, Cody Harris, Troy Lertsch, John Gregory, the city administrator, and we have four people absent. We had several visitors, Matthew S., Neil Ham, and Isaiah C., who is a life dispatcher at the Evans Plunge. The meeting began at twelve noon. Chris commented that the summer has already been extremely busy and tourism peak days appear to be Monday and Thursday. Guests have been accommodating and understanding of the limitations of the Evans Plunge operations in a post-COVID world with employees shortages. Members, not so much. We had comments and implied discontent of member visitors wanting hours extended to be open seven days a week and membership costs reimbursed on their membership card. Update on staffing, the ongoing staffing concerns for all areas of the Evans Plunge were presented. Cody shared because of summer hire, lifeguards wanted more hours and allowed for the opening of outside pool, but this may be short term demand. Early August expects two to three lifeguards will be leaving for family related activities. A new full time head lifeguard has been willing to fill in those daily spots to adequately staff pools with lifeguards. Chris shared the custodial staff now includes two workers, but at least two more needed. Front desk staffing shortages are extremely precarious now and Chris has filled in for shifts as required to keep the plunge open. While the morale has improved, most of the staff are exhausted due to filling every required shift to remain open. Until staffing improves, the Evans Plunge will remain closed on Tuesday and Wednesday to allow for full day opening the remainder of the week. We had budget prep, discussion of big ticket items and wages. Budget, for budget planning twenty twenty-two, a realistic list of big ticket improvements had been prepared. The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee selected the following items for serious consideration. The phase three H back exhaust fans over the pool for heat and moisture dissipation. Replacement of the double doors on the north end of the pool area, the observation platform overlooked area, the chain link fencing to be replaced with another material to be determined. Other items to be considered during regular maintenance closing would include tile replacement in the steam room. Future improvement suggestions were exterior paint overlay with tin type front facade, complete overhaul of the women's locker room with the seats and walls, changing divides and floors. Parking lot pavement improvements, especially the RV parking at the rear of the building in conjunction with North River Street reconstruction work in twenty twenty-three. Chris had prepared a wage comparison of other nearby Black Hill Swimming Ventures or venues to demonstrate the post-COVID wage adjustments required to meet lifeguard staffing challenges in other communities. Lifeguard wages were generally graduated based upon training and experience and were in the range of thirteen dollars and eighty-six cents an hour in Rapid City to the lowest wage for entry level at Edgemont of nine dollars and fifty-five cents per hour. Evans Plunge remains near the lowest with fixed nine dollars and eighty-five cents starting wage for a certified lifeguard candidate. This information will be presented to the admin and finance committee and further distributed during planning of the C O H S budget negotiations later this month. The next meeting will be August twelfth at twenty twenty-one noon at the Evans Plunge and at way at once.
Any questions for Lyndon?
One, what, how many lifeguards are we short for a full staff?
Do you remember how many she said?
Seven. Oh, Evans Plunge isn't just the only department within the city that's short staff, but they're certainly the most severe. And the decision to keep them closed on Tuesdays and Wednesdays is started out because of lifeguards. It's been suggested that we need to go into a swim at your own risk so that we can be open seven days a week. And I do not support that at all. If we're going to offer a swimming facility to our visitors, it's our responsibility to make sure it's as safe as we can make it. So until we get our lifeguard situation improved into a plan where it's adequately staffed, we'll continue on the Tuesday and Wednesday closures. Thank you, Lyndon. Parks, recreation, and beautification, Larry?
Yeah, the cat dog ate my notes. No, I'll have them ready for next meeting.
All right. Thank you. J R is not with us tonight for planning and zoning. Public safety, Bill?
Okay, public safety met today here at the Mueller Center at ten A M. Present were Mayor Nelson, myself, Alderman Johnson, John Gregory, Chief Close, Fall River County Emergency Manager Frank Maynard, Mary Hardy from the city of Hot Springs, and also one of the Hot Springs School Principals Troy Lertsch. Chief Close provided an update on police department activities. We have our two new officers have both started. They're currently working on shift with other officers, slowly starting to work part of the shifts by themselves. As soon as they pass a two hundred question test and spend one week at the academy, they'll be fully certified as South Dakota law enforcement officers. No date has been set when they'll be able to go to the academy. We have one bid and are waiting on two other bids to outfit the new vehicle before it can be placed in service. The animal control officer is now driving the two thousand eight Durango. The disposition of the yellow pickup is to be determined, but it will likely be the recommendation of the police department and public safety that, excuse me, because of high maintenance and repair costs that we probably should be looking at surplusing that vehicle. Chief Close is really still on sick leave, recovering at home, but still working from home. In June, the department responded to four hundred and fifty-eight calls, or five hundred and forty-eight calls, sorry about that. Under old business, we discussed the daycare provider compliance issues that we're experiencing to date. None of the family daycare providers have submitted the required supplemental use permit on review forms and associated information as required by the newly revised Title fifteen, chapter one fifty-five point zero zero four regarding the requirements for family daycare providers. Mayor Nelson and myself took an action to develop a plan to address those issues with the daycare providers. We certainly don't want to be heavy handed, but we also believe that the requirements that we put into that ordinance are important and we want to work with the daycare providers, help them understand why those requirements are there and encourage them to come into compliance. We talked a little bit about the desire for South Dakota Wildland Fire to have a contract with the Mueller Civic Center in case of a major event. The city administrator will pursue an agreement with South Dakota Wildland Fire and base that written agreement on the Mueller Civic Center's existing contract and rates. And again, the state vets home had contacted the city to utilize the Mueller Center as their second backup in the event that the state vets home needed to be evacuated. A letter of understanding to use the Mueller Center has been received and in the event the facility does need to be used, the standard Mueller Center contract and rates will be utilized. We've been talking about utilizing a no trespass order administration fee. Oftentimes, police are called on to serve a no trespass order against an individual on behalf of another individual or a business. This is a very time consuming activity for the police department and we are implementing or a process where there will be, we're asking for a fifty dollar fee for this, this paper to be served. Now, this in no way will interfere with situations such as domestic violence because in situations like that, it's going to be a court order. So we're not impeding the protection of anyone. Fall River County is pursuing a similar process for this system. Under the new system, an individual will come and fill out the form, pay the fee, and the police will then serve that paper. And that no trespass order will be in place until the inventor comes in and releases that fee. So based on that discussion, I guess the committee would request that an agenda item be placed on the August second agenda, updating the fee schedule to include a fifty dollar fee for the serving of a no trespass order. So, I don't know, Misty, do we have to have two council members request an agenda item?
We don't typically get to add those types of things. Typically, a fee is something that's addressed in ordinance somewhere. So in like our police powers ordinances, are we going to change those to add this fee or? We have to have that power, am I right, Garland, either in statute or in ordinance or dress it?
Okay, thank you. We'll figure out where we need to add that line, make sure ordinance so that we can get it added.
I would think it'd be at the police powers section of what we already have.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
We also continued to talk about the emergency management mitigation grants and appreciate Andrea talking about that. Again, the city has until December to file for these grants. There's two potential grants that we have out there. One is a fuels reduction grant where the city meets, city boundaries essentially meets the forest. We've got a lot of areas where to protect the city, some of the excess fuel could be removed. And then also part of our pre-disaster mitigation plan, we've identified a number of key infrastructure, like our water pumping stations that need emergency backup generators. So we'll be once again looking for grants to install those. The city's portion of those grants or those projects would have to probably come from the two one two fund. We took a look at the balloon festival planning. Looks like the committee has done a really good job of, of planning and to date, it looks like the parking and traffic issues, especially those associated with the night glow, have been addressed just to give them a little bit of support. Right now, there's six different locations that there'll be night glows at soccer fields, at the Mueller Center, Butler Park, the Riverside, the Centennial Park, the Mammoth Site, State Vets Home, and Hot Springs High School. So we won't have people clustered up in one area. So it will be six different places that Saturday night all over town. So hopefully, we won't have real bad traffic and parking issues. Under new business, emergency manager Frank Maynard brought, brought us a concern regarding after hours, city related, non-emergency calls that get referred to dispatch from our phone system. There's times during high nine one one call traffic that these calls either don't get addressed as quickly as citizens would like or they actually start interfering with emergency call traffic. To help alleviate this problem, the city administrator and the city engineer took an action to make sure that the city call out list would be updated at least weekly at dispatch to make sure that as those calls do come into dispatch that they can hopefully get those addressed by one proper phone call. We talked about violations of city traffic ordinances and other ordinances. Our folks, our police folks have been very gracious, issuing warnings time and time again. And we have a lot of repeat offenders and so the instructions have been given to the police department that when warranted, and that's especially when we've had repeat offenders that they've been instructed now to start writing citations. Not that we enjoy being heavy handed, but we do have ordinances there in place for a reason. And if, if you've been warned, it's, the warnings are done. Again, Chief Close's folks have been, Chief Close has been instructed to have the folks start to issue citations. Bob, do you want to say any more on that?
No, I would just echo what you said that, understand it's not something we want to do, but if we can't get it taken care of through an all warning, then we're not left with any options but to start writing citations. It's what the citizens expect. We need to adhere to our ordinances. Everybody up here is taking an oath to support those ordinances, so we need to, we need to start doing it.
It's, I don't want to get petty here, but it really is a level of disrespect. If you've been warned once, if you've been warned twice, if you've been warned three times and you just continue to violate, it really is a level of disrespect, not only to the officer, but also to the, to the establishment, so I'll leave it at that. As I said, Troy Lertsch, principal of the high school, was present and he was there to request that the city include in the twenty twenty-two budget funds for a school resource officer. We've talked about this a lot in the past. The school is budgeted, again, forty thousand dollars, or about sixty percent of the cost of a school resource officer. Mr. Lertsch discussed in detail the benefits and recognized need for a school resource officer. Chief Close agreed with his assessment. Some of the benefits of an S R O include the fact that during the summer, we have that extra officer to cover vacation and absentee absences during the summer. It also provides a consistent presence at the school to help build relationship with the kids and be a proactive way to address issues such as vaping and drug usage. Mr. Lertsch stated that the, the support the school receives from the police department is very good. He has no complaints about that. But things could be so much better if we had a consistent present, presence with a dedicated school resource officer. So this will be something that we have an opportunity to discuss in detail at the budget hearings. Okay, if you've listened to my reports from the last few years, I try to read them so I don't get off book. Now probably going to get off book a little bit. Last meeting, last council meeting, we had a number of very good comments regarding our fireworks ordinance. And we promised you that we were listening to you and that we would start working very hard to correct what we think we would start working very hard to correct what we think was a mistake when we revised it last year. After the meeting, I continued to get input from the community. One piece of input in particular was very useful. I received an email from a citizen that said, you know, "Hot Springs is the only community in the Black Hills that allows fireworks, and you ought to look at the state statute because we're within or near the Black Hills National Forest." It's like, okay. And I gotta admit, when we revised the ordinance last year, and I'm not gonna blame anybody, but we somehow got the idea that because we were a municipality, we were exempt from South Dakota Codified Law 34-37-11, which states... Which states? "No person may sell or cause to be sold or use or cause to be used any pyrotechnics of any description or any consumer fireworks within the exterior boundaries of the Black Hills Forest Fire Protection District." And it goes on to say a few other things, and we are within the Black Hills Forest Fire Protection District. It essentially runs from the Cheyenne River north from Highway 79 west to the Wyoming border. And like I said, when we did the ordinance revision last year, for whatever reason, it's like, well, we're a municipality, we're exempt from that. Well, normally, if there's an exemption tied to a chapter, that exemption is clearly stated. I don't see, there's not one, there's no exemption written in there. So, I called Frank Maynard and I said, "Frank, are we in the district?" And he says, "Well, yeah." And I pulled it up and there's a map, and yeah, Hot Springs is in the Fire Protection And so, I called the state's attorney general and almost got an answer from him, and they said, "You need to talk to your city attorney." So, Garland, we need to talk. And then it goes on, you know, part of our job up here, like I said, we take an oath of office to adhere to the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs. Later on, in this section of South Dakota Codified Law, if an individual uses some fireworks and starts a fire in the Black Hills National Forest, if I shoot off a Roman candle and it flies over to Seven Sisters and it starts a fire, I am financially responsible for what it costs to extinguish that fire. So, if it's a little fire, that won't be so bad. If it burns all of Seven Sisters, that's gonna be really bad. So, this whole thing is kind of an ugly dilemma. Here, we have gone from, do we need to reduce the days and reduce the hours, but as we have done our due diligence and looked at South Dakota Codified Law, what it looks like at this 20 seconds, and I'm not saying this is where it's gonna end up, but I am looking at our city attorney, because the attorney general wouldn't talk to me directly. We, and I'm saying this because, like I said, we want to be very transparent with you. This was a big deal two weeks ago, and it hadn't gotten any smaller. Not trying to be petty, but we are gonna follow the law. Our previous ordinance said, "Well, you can have fountains that go no higher than seven feet." Well, that provision of our previous ordinance, as I read this law, was a violation of the law. The only thing that is allowed within the Black Hills Fire Protection District are novelty fireworks, which are things like party poppers, sparklers, snakes, and smoke bombs, or display fireworks. So, what the city uses in the Fourth of July display are a different class of fireworks, according to the American Pyrotechnics Association, than consumer fireworks. They're not the same class that you can buy south of Cheyenne River at those stores. So, it appears, and again, I'm looking at Garland, it appears that the city can continue with its city display, but the use of consumer fireworks, those packaged, preassembled fireworks that you can buy in a fireworks stand south of Cheyenne River, other than sparklers, snakes, smoke bombs, party poppers, there's a very short list of what a novelty is. Those appear to be off the table. So, we are still looking at it. We'll, whatever answer we come up with, it's not gonna be flippant, but it is gonna be right. We want to protect, we want to do what's right. Yes, we will celebrate our independence in the best and most legal way we can. A display is, the reason I believe that we can do a display is that is a, our folks that do the display are trained. The fire department is on scene, and we have control, and we can say, "Stop" anytime we need to. In fact, you probably don't know this, if the wind ever kicks up to, I think it's 10 miles an hour or greater, that display will stop, because what we don't want is for those fireworks to be blown off course and get out of the area that we can protect. So, I know this is long and drawn out, I kind of apologize, but I want you to know, we're gonna follow the law, and I'm not trying to put excessive limitations because so many people got up and spoke, because when I walked out of here two weeks ago, my intention was, okay, what do we need to do to whittle it down to make it reasonable? Well, South Dakota Codified Law has pretty much told us what we can't do, and now if the attorneys tell me I'm wrong, then we'll go back and we'll write into our ordinance whatever it is the legal folks tell us we can write, but I'm also, what I'm hearing historically is, this is the way it used to be. So, I don't know how we got off, I know how we got off in the last version, I don't know how we got off before that, but we'll continue to communicate with you as we become more and more definitive on what our next steps are and what our revised ordinance will look like. And I'm sure as with many other things, there's gonna be about 50% of the people out there saying, "Good, you finally got it right," and there's probably 50% of the folks out there saying, "Probably not that exact stuff." So, anyway, thank you for indulging me in that explanation. Does anybody have any questions, because that's a lot?
I have a comment. In past years, I've had financial dealings with property just south of the Cheyenne River Bridge, and we had to deal with putting out spot fires all the time, and the bubble rockets would come down on the road and stuff. And I've always kind of maintained that just pulling off to the side of the highway was not safe to shoot off fireworks there, and I know we don't have any control over what happens out in county, but I always maintained that you should shoot them off where you buy them, so the stands out in the county should provide a place to shoot those off.
Thank you for your opinion.
I remember when I was growing up, there was no fireworks in town, you had to go south of Cheyenne River, shoot them off, and Bridge is one of them that everybody went to and shot them off down.
Yes, that's where they all got shot off, was right there. It's been kind of my side of the earth.
So, anyway, again, thank you for listening. We're gonna do our very best to get this right once and for all.
Next meeting?
Yes, we're gonna have another meeting on Monday, August 16th, 10:00 a.m. here at the Mueller Center. Any questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill. Public Works, Dana Craig.
Don't mind Craig. Our July 13th meeting here at the Mueller Center for Public Works, those in attendance, Marcia Bishop and Norman Hoodwell and Cheston Turnbull, they were citizens coming to us, Ed Johnston, John Gregory, Tracy Sebastian, Craig Romy, Jason Correll, and myself. Ms. Bishop approached, came and approached us with a problem with the Hope Buildings that they are putting up, she's catching a lot of runoff. We advised her on just a few ways of catching their attention, and then from that point on, then it would be something between them and Hope Homes. Other things on here, Cheston Turnbull approached us for his property, which is 712 Sulphur Springs Street, and he would like to get some gravel and get some erosion problems and runoff kind of fixed up there, so we're in the process of looking at those possible repairs that city streets department might think is best. Also, we have a backup sewage backup, 145 Garden Street, and they're gonna be putting in a crank. I believe that has been done already. Flood drainage issue, Mr. Evans, residence 110 South 16th Street, we've been looking at that, and really, there's, I don't think there's really a reasonable repair there, but what we're doing is kind of putting together a incident, steps that we will take during a flood incident, a snow incident, and a hail incident. Problem being is, the property is, the elevation is so low, and it has a drainage there, and we upsized the drainage there too. It collects from about three blocks away, all coming downhill, and so you know where I'm talking about, it's right behind the older car wash in that intersection in the alleyway. So, the best that we can do is really have some kind of response list to things that would be an emergency. And I also talked with some of the property owners, let them know that any debris that is grown or left alongside the alleyway in a flood event has been a creative problem. In the past, they've had numerous trash cans there, so it's pretty much something we're gonna have to put together in steps during some type of an event, whichever event comes. Here lately, it's been raining, to help them with their flooding here. But literally, I have pictures that the property owners have given me where a car will be up to the windows and water in that climate area. So, it's in an area where you have the drainage, storage sheds, garages, stuff like that, right in that same section. Obviously, you're gonna have stuff on your property that if you got a good flood event, is going to take hold and run down to the drainage. Before, I guess in the past, they've had trash cans, they had a child swimming pool, little swimming pool, they got down there and plugged it all up. The last problem they had was hail. The hail runs down there as it's melting, but when it congregates all together at the drain, it freezes together like a big block of ice and just cuts everything off. So, steps will have to be taken depending on what the event is. Other than that, there is no reasonable way of repairing that. It would take probably 20 trucks for the dirt to just level that spot. So, and we have been talking, I'm still talking with property owners. I guess this has been going on since the 50s, that's what they've been telling. Other things on here, we approved a contract for the pedestrian crosswalks, which we discussed earlier, Dollar General. We have the petition to the city to vacate a half undeveloped road in exchange for access and paved road. So, we're coming out probably good on that because it is just a dirt drive as it stands right now. Well, salvage items list has been put together. That will be presented to the mayor and the rest of the council. We also discussed request city resources for the balloon festival in August. The assessment district for Martin Street Improvement District, all that is being put together. Code enforcement pending items. To go along with what Bill was saying earlier about repetitive nuisance and code violations, property violations, all that, we're starting to take steps to get that done. I wouldn't mind going the same route that the police department is going on theirs. Fall River Water Users Easement Request at the boundaries of the airport and Wildlife Area, we discussed that. We felt that should be approved. And that's pretty much it. We do have a firm code enforcement specialist coming to our next meeting on the 27th at 1:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center. They are gonna give us an overview of the services they do, and I don't know what will result from it, but anybody who's interested in that, please attend. And our next meeting will be here at the Mueller Center on the 27th at 1:00 p.m.
Craig?
This sounds good to me.
Any questions for Dave or Craig?
To your code violations, Dave, talked a little bit about it at Public Works today. Not only are we going to be getting a little heavier-handed when it comes to parking violations, we'll also, the code violations, I want to work with Scott. I want to work with Scotts and Kerry especially to put together a tool or two so that we have a good understanding on a weekly basis what the new violations are that came in and what's the status of the old ones. So we can take a look at it and see where we're at on that. Going to be tightening the screws on them a little bit also to get a better handle on this. Southern Hills Golf Course. We met on July 12th at City Hall. And one particular item that we spent some time talking about, it's one repeat item. We've seen an increase in, I use the language of our ordinance, improper personal conduct while in a park or recreation area. We've had a number of occasions where people can't figure out what part of the course they're supposed to use for restroom facilities. We've had one tournament that's been a repeat offender. And I'll just sum up the letter that the Golf Course Advisory Committee has sent to the organizers of that committee. Again, talking about improper personal conduct. If this behavior continues, the tournament will no longer be allowed to use Southern Hills Golf Course as their venue. So that's pretty strong language. We're waiting to see how they respond to that. But very recently, since then, we've also had some repeat offenders. It's mostly on the back nine. There are a lot of homes that are going in there, and that's not the type of behavior that the homeowners want to see. We've talked about the fact that if you're engaging in that behavior and you can look around and you can see a house, that house can also see you, so stop it. It's not appropriate behavior. So we've asked the clubhouse to actually post and provide the golfers as they head out to the course with a particular section of our ordinance. It's 92-08, if anybody wants to read it, so that they're aware of it. It's been talked about potentially getting a porta potty out there. There may be some restrictions with that. And we're also going to purchase some additional signage to put out on the back nine to make people aware that this type of behavior is allowed on our golf course. And we shouldn't have to be reminding them of that. So we'll continue watching that. The next Golf Course Advisory Committee will be August 9th, 5:00 p.m. at City Hall. That brings us to our finance officer report.
Thank you. It's hard to come back to work today. I've been off since Tuesday of last week. I was in Texas celebrating my grandmother's 90th birthday with her. So today, this morning, coming back was hard. Waking up was hard. This late meeting is hard. But thank you for the time off. I know that we're very busy in the finance office right now, and it wasn't the best timing, but I appreciated the time. We've been real busy with budget still. Hoping to have the info for council by Friday at noon. Still holding true to that, although feeling a little behind. But that is still my commitment to you. I'll have the Excel spreadsheets emailed out to you and hopefully the budget reports from our accounting software printed out and provided to you by noon on Friday. We did receive notice that our audit was accepted by the Department of Legislative Audit. The publication will be in our official newspaper. Now we are ready to do our required Emma reporting. That's related to our Evans Pledge Mineral Springs sales tax bonds. We need to complete lien holder certifications required by lenders to the city. So we'll start the steps to take care of those necessary reporting requirements now that the audit's been accepted. I hadn't given an update on our new hire in a while. If you haven't met her yet, I don't know where you've been because she's right up front in City Hall and super helpful and friendly. She's calm, confident, and competent. She treats everyone kindly, and I'm happy to have her smiling face at City Hall. And hopefully, you've all got a chance to meet and visit with her. She's been very busy also, learning the development coordinator jobs, the building permits, the licensings, our ordinances. There are all kinds of responsibilities that she's learned a little bit about and eager and willing to take on more. And so I'm really appreciative of that. And I just wanted to give you all an update on that. We are still inputting timesheets. We had over 100 city employees on last payroll. We do payroll every two weeks. We are still taking the paper timesheets, leave slips, overtime authorizations, compiling that information. The rollout of our timekeeping or time tracking software has not been, it's been underwhelming is the word I'll use. So that does take a lot of time. And because of segregation of duties, we have to have dual control with those processes. So it does take two people from the finance office a little more than half a day each to process the biweekly time cards. And we're still working towards getting the software set up so that hopefully we can make that process a little bit easier for everyone involved. That's about all I have for an update because I've spent the majority of this day just getting caught up in all the things I missed last week and wasn't quite prepared to give you a good update this evening. But thank you for understanding.
Any questions for Misty? Thank you, Misty. John, City Administrator, report?
Good evening. Of course, it's DOT and road preparations. We're getting closer and closer to the date, so a lot of activity happening. The DOT will be adding in a sidewalk section from where our suspended sidewalk ends at or about the front door of where Pistol Paddies is at. And that sidewalk will continue from there around to Menicotta Bridge. And that will be a very tight spot through there on that west side with a sidewalk. But it's in their plans now, so they will be installing that. I've asked the DOT about budget requirements that the city needs to address in 2022 for the highway reconstruction bid letting, including the buildings that I've asked for from the road rehabilitation work that they're going to do first. They're still have some additional information to get to me, but it looks like it's still within our original estimates and budgets. At this time, decorative lighting that we will have to address in 2023 has seen some price increasing. The core engineers are scheduled to make a site visit to come to Hot Springs August 3rd. That's in conjunction with their hydrology report of the Fall River. The new flood study will get its blessing. We had a meeting with the DOT about a media and public communications coordinator consultant. Shortlisted three engineering firms to look at doing that work. They would be the go-to people to keep everyone posted on what's going on with the highway reconstruction, where they're going to be working at, what roads will be shut down, delays that you can expect. So we're looking forward to seeing who they get on board for that work. Our streets and utilities and parks and cemetery departments have been very busy. We're working at Valley View Drive with a drainage improvement project. We have our materials purchased. We've got the surveyors out there identifying city right-of-way limits so we can install drainage coves. We've continued some cleanup and shoulder grading work, particularly on Happy Hollow, to get the drainage again moving off the street instead of through the middle of the street. Had a lot of tree limbs that came down this last storm at the cemetery. They were going to get that cleaned up. Someone decided to graffiti some of our sidewalks, and that took up a day of our parks people cleaning that mess up. Our water department has had several big water leaks that they've had to address in the street, one on Houston Avenue and two on Sixth Street. There were saddle issues. They were not main failures. That's some individual services leaking. Older services will leak over time. Centennial Park, we went in and built it down and relayed billings on the northeast portion of that parking lot to get rid of some of that tripping hazard and that broken asphalt in that area. Our wastewater treatment plant has finally got the repairs done. It's screw pressed following the lightning event and required a reset of our remote panel. Hot Brook Pump Station's also had two lightning strikes. However, Lightning Arrest System is working, but it did manage to short out the relay with the 2 million gallon tank, which means it's a manual reset for our guys when that happens. We had a light happen on the Fourth of July. Our water fill station part of it got ripped down by someone. And our RV dump station had a temporary overfill situation on the Fourth of July weekend. All that was corrected. Driving through town, you'll see that they have the pedestrian crosswalks painted on the main streets. We started secondary streets to do. In addition, they've removed the high school graduation banners and replaced them with the Soak in Hot Springs banners. That includes some advertising. We have some newer businesses wanting to add some advertising banners moving forward. As Misty said, we've had a lot of budget planning and budget meetings. I've met with the department heads. Most of them. I have a few more to meet with tomorrow to get their budget ideas together, their needs versus their wants defined. Should be an interesting budget year. Hopefully, that all of the deadlines that we've promised you. We will meet in a timely manner. I don't want to leave Misty hanging, so I'll try to do my part as quick as I can. Evans Pledge continues to have issues identifying lifeguard and front desk staff. Some are being extremely busy. They've had some very record-breaking days at sales. Our big item for 2022 will be the roof ventilation system to dissipate the heat and the moisture that's collecting in that area. I guess, other than that, we got the balloon festival. It's coming, whether we like it or not. It's coming. There's a lot of balloons going to be here. 33 at this moment, possibly 35. That's their limit. So Friday, August 27th through Sunday, August 29th, they will be taking over the town. And the Big Night Glows will be all over town that Saturday night. Really looking forward to that. The Chamber of Commerce and the balloon committee have done an outstanding job preparing this year for this event. Thank you.
Any questions for John? Thank you, John. I don't have a mayor's report for you. Just a reminder to council, the next Tuesday is our first budget night, and that's Thursday. And if we need to schedule other nights, we will. But it's on us next week. And it certainly looks like personnel, whether it's additional people or salaries, may take up a lot of our conversation with everything else that's needed. Be interesting talking about the 2022 budget with you. Look forward to those meetings. And as always, those budget meetings are open to the public. They will be recorded. So you're welcome to attend. And here are the thoughts and the comments of the council as they come up with the 2022 budget. We don't have an executive session, so that takes us to a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.